Okay, well, I think we're ready to go. A call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Monday, June 4th, to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Present.
Mr. Bowersox?
Present.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Present by telephone.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing.
Next up are the approval of the minutes from a meeting of May 21st. Is there a mo-
I move that the minutes be approved.
Second? Any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Brandon?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion because of the topic that I think most people came out for tonight. I would like to move item E1, which is the text amendment about the zoning ordinance, to lower down on the agenda so that we can get to the historic preservation items sooner. So I would make a motion to move E1 down on the agenda to come after item I-6. Between I-6 and I-7.
I would second that motion.
To follow most of the new business, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of reordering the agenda, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. That brings us to reports of standing committees, committee of the whole. I don't believe there are any other reports.
Go to Dee.
Oh, sorry, right, let me just get Dee here. Okay. There are two items that are not related to the preservation ordinance. I'm going to stick those first. First up is Ernest Westfield of 918 North Harvey.
Thank you very much. I'm like the lady sitting behind me, I don't know what I'm going to say, but I'm going to try to do my best. I'm here as a response of the recent violence that we've been having in and around King School.
Yes. They'll make some adjustments in the back here to pick it up a little louder.
I'm here as a result of the violence that's been taking place in and around King School. We've had, I think, three occurrences that have happened there. Before I get into it, I would like to say that we have a very good police force. And whenever they come out, I feel kind of sorry for them because the kids don't respect them. I know when they had the scene all blocked off there, kids were walking down past that green line, you know? And I think what's bringing me here is that the parents, when I read in the paper about all this stuff that's taking place, nobody seems to mention the parents. Talking about the kids need a place to play, they need a job. These kids, they come from families to where they turned these kids out in the street. They show up in the street bed, they show up in schools beds, so we just wreak havoc over everything that we do. And the police force, you know, I don't know what type of, how many men you have or people you have working for you, but the thing is that we're stretching them too thin. Now, on that one occurrence, they had, I think, all the police officers there. If something were to happen in the other parts of the city, I don't know what they would have done. But somewhere's down the line, someone has to start stressing to these parents, "You need to help us in this affair." You know, getting them a job, getting them a place to play basketball is not enough. But the parents are the ones that's really telling them, "You're talking to the school system." The parents are not involved. Kids are out on the street at the age of seven and eight, up to 12 o'clock at night, and they bring three and four-year-olds with them to train them on how to act. And they're very disrespectful when the police officers come out there. So maybe I'm here to ask for help. I don't know if, whenever you come out on a call, if you could bring a social worker with you. Maybe you can find out who these kids are and go to their homes and identify these kids that are at risk that's creating all these problems. Because, I'm going to tell you, playing basketball is not going to solve this problem. Building a center for kids to play, well, these weren't kids, these are grown men. To me, I think they need a job instead of just playing basketball all day. But we have a very good park there, King Park, and the kids are just tearing it up. They got to come out and unstop the toilet, they put everything on the side of the building, and then when the police come, they just scatter. So, and we have a brand-new tennis court. And I called the park this with the CFO, is there any way that we could bring programs there? The tennis court is beautiful, but it didn't come with instructions. Our kids don't know how to play tennis. They can't swim, okay? If we can do something to get these kids involved in some kind of activities, I think we can slack up on some of this because they have a lot of idle time on their hands. I know I go out there to hit a golf ball, but now and then, next thing I know, here's a whole bunch of kids around me. Can I hit a golf ball? Our kids can't play golf, okay? If we can start some kind of program to where we can keep these kids busy, and I don't know where it would start, from the Human Relations Department, if they can do this, but somebody needs to do something because we're growing kids, bad kids. I took some kids to work when I was employed, but I'm not employed now, I'm retired, but I took some kids to a daycare center. And there was a three-year-old kid, and everywhere out of his mouth was profanity. I came back two days later, this kid was gone. They had to kick him out, okay? But the parents say they didn't learn this at home. They don't have a course in school, Profanity 101. I've never seen it, I've never heard it. But somewhere's down the line, you know, we have to do something about this. And I think if you can, I think we need to involve the ministers. Because you have a lot of people who will go to church, but they will not go to school to support their kids. And I think we need to get some kind of pressure from all sources. The police department cannot handle all the problems. They're in the schools already. You know, they're stretched thin. So I think in Urbana, we need to start trying to do something, maybe through the Human Relations Department, have some kind of little summit here. They just had one in Champaign. All they did was just write, but nobody came with any solutions. I remember years ago, I used to operate the summer program in Champaign County. And every year, I would have 300 kids in that summer program, and we would start them to work this as soon as school ended. They don't have that anymore. A lot of things that we used to have that would keep kids out of trouble, they're no longer here. So I would be willing to help if someone could come up and think of some things that we can do. Because we have to do something to save our kids because we're losing generations of kids. Kids are not going to go anyplace but to prison. And if you look at the news tonight, you can see where crime is up all across the nation. Teens. But I'm talking about six and seven-year-olds. You know, to me, is that a violation of a curfew or something? What time are these kids supposed to be in? And I think what needs to happen, and one thing about the police department, whenever you come, don't turn your sirens on. These kids are pretty hip. You know, when they hear the noise, they scatter, okay? One day, one night, they came through on a bicycle. I didn't know it was a police officer until I asked them, but it was a welcome sight to see. That way, you can come up on it and then we'll give them a chance to scatter. But we do have a very good police force, and I think they can't handle this situation by themselves. It's going to take a community to do this, the school system. I went to a school, and I asked them, I said, "Well, do the ministers come here?" Well, they come for a while and then they leave. Kids are pushing each other, doing everything to each other in the school system, and we can't do anything to stop it. But I think we need to do it. Okay, I didn't mean to take up your time, I know you've got a more important issue behind me, but I'll be willing to do it. Robert knows how to get in touch with me, and I'd be more than happy to help if possible, okay?
You've got a comment?
Yes.
Yeah, actually, you're, what you're talking about is as important or more important than a building.
Okay.
We love our buildings, but we love, we should love our children more. Certainly, the city should put some attention on the King School neighborhood area. I know it's an ongoing, an evolving challenge. I think that the idea of putting an activity center or community center could really help. And I'm thinking about when I was a youngster, not that I always got into trouble, but I really enjoyed going up to the park at the end of my block where there was a building in the shape of a garage, and it was manned by two volunteers, and I think they were like basically college students. It was the Park District. And you could check out board games there. There were games that you could play, you know, hand games and things like that, you could play around the building. And they also had an arts and crafts facility that was run, and they, what they did is they purchased a whole bunch of plaster figurines, and they had big tables, and kids could come and purchase them for 50 cents. And then they had paints, and so you could paint your figurine and take it home. And that table was always filled with young kids, you know, painting birds, or raccoons, or bears, or whatever it was that they were doing. That was a summertime program. And it, a lot of the kids in my neighborhood went up there and spent five hours at that park community building. So I don't know what it would take for the city to come up with a similar plan. There would be perhaps a construction, or they'd have to like, you know, get kind of dedicated fund for that. There are ideas that we could work on. And I think it's really necessary for the adults and the parents in that neighborhood to come and talk to us because by dint of numbers and repetition is going to actually make this thing happen. So I really appreciate, Mr. Westfield, you came out here tonight.
Well, could I just add one thing? And looking around the neighborhood, you have a lot of absentee landlords. And a lot of them just don't care, you know, who they put in that house. And it seems that that problem is built by that. I don't know what kind of ordinance you have here, but I know with the housing authority, and I don't want to say anything that I'm not familiar with, but I do know that they have something that says, "If you create problems, we have a right to put you out." I'm not sure of that, but that's what I heard. But I think we need to hold the absentee landlords partly responsible for that. I mean, you don't put somebody in a home that's going to wreak havoc over the other residents that live there, that's been there for a long term. And that's what's happening. All they want is to rent, okay? And we need a safe community. Because if we're going to bring businesses to this community, we want to let them know that we have a safe community here, we have a very good police force. That's what we need to do. I think if you look at your ordinance and go through the neighborhood, and you can see it. I was told when I was in school that when you have a problem, one of two things have to occur. You have to either see it, or you have to hear it. The other night, we heard the shots, and when we walked up on the scene, we could see what was happening. And it's the same thing with the housing situation. When you go and see a whole bunch of dudes around a house, to me, that's to say something's going on here. All of them don't live there, okay? And it's something I think that we need to be conscious of. But I think if you look at the absentee landlords, you can see where it's coming from. Because I do know that you're experiencing problems in other part of the city here, and it's just, we have to do something to stop it, or at least make an attempt to do it.
Well, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Well, thank you. Next up, Mr. Stan Summers, 406 East Mumford Drive, to speak on off-street parking.
Can I speak before you consider the ordinance?
It's going to be much, much later this evening, if that's what you prefer.
Okay.
So what's going to go on all this other time?
We have a discussion of 502 and 504 West Elm.
Okay. I'm sure most of you paid your tax bills sometimes in the last couple of weeks. As always, they were higher. Is that right?
Yeah.
What about when you pay for your gasoline at the gas pump? Is it higher? Yeah. Okay. I certainly think we don't need more bureaucracy in government. Taxes are high enough. They should be reduced. I think that's an important thing that the City Council can contribute to. When I saw the News Gazette article titled, "Off-Street Parking: Ordinance in the Works", I thought, "How ridiculous." What's needed is fewer people in the Community Development Services Department, and fewer ordinances proposed with, hopefully, lower taxes. I don't believe someone's, I can't believe that someone said, "We do have some blighted areas for gravel parking lots that have taken over backyards. Some are not legal." To me, that language seems arrogant, elitist, with assumed superiority. A personal judgment on my part. What about less government and lower taxes? This proposed ordinance seems ridiculous to me. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Summers? Thank you. Okay, before we start in on the discussion of 502 and 503, I want to include for the record about 25 emails that were received from Georgia Morgans, Sharon Irish, Maria Ryan, Larry Miller, Philip Johnston, Brad Hudson, Larry, I think I already said Larry Miller, Danny Otto, let's see, Tom Kilton, Harry Morris, Christopher Enck, Pat Cardenas, Bonnie Erwin, Clark Barkley, Janice Duraska, Lori Serb, Robin Kirton, Dorothy Martriano, let's see, Drew Phillips, Rebecca Bryant, Michael Skazurba, sorry if I butchered your last name, Barbara Hedlund, Jan McCracken, Patricia Ruby Howell, and Richard Palmer. All of these people have sent email in favor of the designation of 502 and 504 West Elm as historic properties. So I'll include these in the record. I would ask that since we have about 20, 25 people up here, to please keep your comments brief and to the point. Yes. Yes, but, well, these are petitions and communications. Okay. First up, Greg Carla, George Carlisle, 406 East Green.
George Carlisle, 406 East Green, just down the street here. As far as the house at 502 West Elm is concerned, I see that if it's to be preserved, it needs to be restored substantially and perhaps not be in as many apartment units as it is now, has very unsightly. Firescape stairway from the top floor, the roof looks like it's in very bad condition in places, and the cluster mailboxes on the front porch is some part of an eyesore as well, too. The 504 East Elm looks like it could still be restored, the houses should be restored to substantially their original appearance rather than being caught up into so many apartments as they are now. And I realize that would cost a great deal of money to do so, but if we're going to restore the houses, they should be restored properly, not become a sort of a slum eyesore the way they're going now. If they can't be restored properly, then it would be in favor of a new apartment building provided as tastefully done like the one near Green and Kohler, not obliterating the neighborhood like the one right behind us here that's going up. Thank you.
Any questions for George? Thank you. Next up, Dan Folk, 807 West Main.
Daniel Folk from 807 West Main Street. I'm here tonight not just as an Urbana resident, but as also the president of the Urbana Development Corporation, which is an organization now. We're not-for-profit, and we're organizing around the principle of the preservation of the historic and low-density character of Urbana's older neighborhood. So we're very interested in what happens to these two properties. It's hard for any of us on the board of the UDC to imagine if these properties aren't worthy of landmarking, what property in Urbana possibly could be. There are certainly, I think you'll hear more from others who know more than I do about the architectural and business heritage of the people that developed them, but I just want to add our voice in support. They're certainly economically viable. Urbana is full of older structures. For instance, my house, a number of others, they're older than these houses and are still economically viable. And I think that we would find, if these were on the market, that they would be well-received by the marketplace even under landmarking. So I urge you to support the landmarking of the 502 and 504 Elm. Thank you.
Next up, Carolyn Baxley, 510 West Main.
I also support the landmarking of 502 and 504 West Elm. I would just urge you to support your staff recommendation and the unanimous vote of the Historic Preservation Commission. It's really wonderful that we have these two properties presented together, and it's very important that they be landmarked together because they need to remain in situ and they need to be restored as such. It will be interesting to see, if you do landmark them, what their fate will be, but I can assure you that there are people waiting in the wings to acquire these properties and to renovate them properly. And I urge you to vote yes for the landmarking. Thanks.
Any questions? Thanks, Carol. Next up, Linda Lorenz. And following, I'm going to read off two names so that you know who's coming up after. Then it'll be Sharon Irish.
Linda Lorenz, I live at 409 West High. I'm in support of the designation of the two houses. Never been inside, but I've lived here my entire life, and they are an important part of the visual sense that I have of the city and the downtown. And I hope that we will preserve them so that others can see how beautiful they are and learn about their history. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. After Sharon will be Robin Kirton.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Sharon Irish, I live at 608 West Iowa Street. I'm an architectural historian and a former member of the Historic Preservation Commission, also a member of the Preservation and Conservation Association of this community. And I ask that you please vote to designate 502 and 504 West Elm Street. I'm going to be a little bit more general in my comments because I would like to pull back and note that this community is standing to benefit from preserving structures like this. So that while I know that you are opposing, the owners, if you vote to landmark these buildings, I'd like you to consider what you would be supporting, and that is to designate tangible connections to Urbana's 19th century past and a streetscape that has green and a domestic scale to it, and also construction and architectural details that are no longer possible to build today. And further, of course, as you know, the physical evidence of the lives of important leaders in the past, as well as the architect of 504, Joseph Royer. And just to place this in a larger framework, there's a fellow named Dennis Frenchman who's written about the importance of historic places, what he calls narrative places, of being places where stories can be associated with spaces and structures. And I think if you would please think about the way in which these public spaces can be made to come alive with multiplicity of stories, not simply those two residences and their stories, but entire neighborhoods, these kinds of heritage places, I think you will also find encourage more investment, increase property taxes, and they represent some of the most valuable real estate. They're distinctive, they're impossible to build now, and if we tear them down with, and replace them with shoddy and unattractive construction, which is amply evident in this town already, we are simply contributing to a spiral that does not help Urbana's prosperity and certainly aesthetic appearance. So thank you for your consideration. I hope you vote yes.
Any questions, Sharon? Thank you. Robin Kirton is next, and then Andrew Fell.
Robin Kirton, 203 South Birch. I would like to mention that the historic concerns have, that are even heard echo my own sentiments, but I'd like to also add the consideration of the strain on our resources and landfills and conditions, issues like this that, as our society in a whole tends to go toward, and also, as Sharon said, just, you know, the general downward spiraling of the quality of our housing and buildings. And I think that Urbana should take a stand against that kind of shoddiness. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Andrew Fell is architect representing the owner of 502 and 504. And I guess, Mark, you going to speak with him?
Yeah. We have a question. Do you want us to, was there a different party agenda where we'd be able to speak?
Oh, you can speak here. If we have questions for you later, we'll, during that, yeah, we'd ask you again.
If it's okay, I'll go ahead and go first, then Andrew will chime in, and then we'll get in and out fairly efficiently.
Okay, my name is Mark Miller with offices at 30 East Main in Champaign, and I'm the attorney representing the owner of record, Erwin Goldfarb. The materials I handed out to you are just identical materials that we provided at the Historic Commission's meetings in the past. I've just got some brief comments. Our architect, Andrew Fell, is here, he has some brief comments, and then we'll be available for any questions. I think it's important that you understand how we got here. It's public knowledge that we originally submitted plans to redevelop the site, and right at that point is when the petition for tonight's consideration was submitted. At that time, the owner asked for my assistance. I've got my own background in preservation, having professionally been involved in large landmark preservation, and having been involved in restoring a couple of residences. I also know that Andrew has been an architect associated with preservation, so I asked that he and I go look at the properties with the goal of recommending ways of rehabilitating them. Based on my experience in my visit to properties, I now understand the monumental challenges that face the owner in trying to keep the properties. Over the past 26 years, the owner had reason to demolish, but instead spent significant money bringing the property up to code as much as possible. As the owner explained to me, we struggled for 26 years to keep these properties alive. Unfortunately, there are limits as to what can be done, so before submitting plans for the new development, the owner, Andrew, reviewed the condition of the property and the options for trying to keep the existing buildings under the various codes. The properties are a patchwork of structures built and modified at different times over the past 100 years. Based on code requirements and a desire to provide quality, safe housing, the owner was finally forced into proposing a redevelopment plan for the site. At this point, and as the owner's lawyer, I'm put in the position of advising him to formally object to the designations in order to preserve our rights. Our position before the Historic Commission, and now before you, is that there is insufficient evidence to support findings in favor of the petitions, and we request that they be denied. We have filed written objections to the petition with the city through the Historic Commission, and by reference are incorporating those objections in tonight's meeting. I've handed out copies of those materials to you. In short, the ordinance requires the petition to properly identify the real estate as well as its owner. The petition improperly identified the owner and did not correctly describe the property. Based on the defects on the face of the petition, we believe that you're required under your ordinance to deny the petition. That said, we have been and will continue to be open to objectively considering all sides to discussions involving these properties. As far as we are concerned, all options are on the table, and we welcome any input and assistance that the city can give. We're committed to making this a win-win proposition. Thus, while we are opposing the petition, we are willing to listen as we consider our options after tonight's meeting. At this point, I'll turn the floor over to Andrew, who can provide you some additional information.
Andrew Fell, 302 West Hill Street. I'm the architect for the owner of the property. I don't necessarily want to rehash all the things we've gone over, so to be brief, I was, my position for the owner was to evaluate the properties and see what the highest and best use we could make of them. And certainly, the first option is to restore them and to keep the properties. That is simply economically unfeasible. I think it's important to note that Mark and I are both very pro-preservation. I've built a great deal of my practice on working on older structures and historic So we're not unsympathetic to wanting to keep the properties. It simply is not an economically viable option for the owner. I guess the last thing that I want to say is we are certainly open to all the options we have. We'd like to talk to the city, we'd like to talk to the community on ways that we can find a way to keep these. If that's what we have to do. That's what we have to do.
Questions?
Could you articulate the options you see on the table at the present time?
Well, I mean, in terms of for the owner or what to do with the properties?
You said there's no options off the table at the moment, right? So what do you see?
Yeah. The owner has the option of coming back, assuming that you designate the properties tonight, of coming back through, and staff can clarify this for you, but of showing economic hardship and then obtaining a certificate that would allow us to demolish the properties. At this point, we've informally approached folks in the city, and we've attempted to approach some of the community members on looking at a possibility of trying to preserve 504, that's the wood one, right? But we would need to bring down 502 because it's in horrendous condition. And what we would have in mind for 502 would be to replace it with something brand-new, but that would incorporate all the historical elements of 504. And Andrew has successfully done that already in the community and can physically point out buildings. In fact, I believe that the first speaker tonight was referring to a property that Andrew actually designed. And so that's our concept.
Since the question about historic landmarking is really what ultimately is going to be the question of whether to do or not tonight, and it has to do not so much with the interior of the building, but with the exterior. Andrew Fell, can you, I wonder if you could address the, what you would determine the state of the exterior of the buildings rather than the interior? I understand the interiors need a lot of work. How sound is the brickwork or the tucking or whatever?
There are many overlapping issues, and part of those have to deal with rehabilitating the properties into keeping their current use. So there's several levels to your question. The 502 is probably in, it is in worse shape than 504. The basement of it is, it's got a brick foundation wall. It's caving in, it's cracked, it's bulging. To save that building, the entire basement has to be rebuilt. The basement of 504 is not quite as bad, but it is almost as bad. If we want to save those, if it's our goal, and it's the owner's goal, to, would be to rehabilitate those properties and keep them as apartment buildings, most of the windows in the units don't meet code. And I don't know how we solve that problem. They're not big enough for egress windows under the current code. So they're, we'd be forced, I mean, I don't know what we do. We have to get either concessions from the city to put the windows back in the way they are, or we can't use it as an apartment building. And so there's also thresholds where, depending on how much money you spend to fix up a building, certain other state things kick in for accessibility and all kinds of other issues. So it's, there's just many overlapping, I guess, answers to your question.
Then one of the options would be discovering a new use?
Possibly.
Okay. Probably, when we get to the point in the agenda, we'll have more discussion. Thank you.
Any other questions? Brendan?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, I have one question about the ownership chain that you presented. It looks like in 1976, if I understand, both of these were bought by a trust number 872. And I just wanted to make sure that I was clear. You'd said that the owner, Erwin Goldfarb, had been working on these properties for something like 29 years. So I just wanted to-
26 years.
26?
Yes.
So is trust number 872 is a trust that is Erwin Goldfarb's? Or could you just describe a little bit that ownership during that period?
if you flip on the back two pages, there's a deed of transfer. I don't have the material with me to tell you who the beneficial owner of that land trust was. If your question is, could it have been Erwin Goldfarb or Erwin Goldfarb with a combination of owners? The answer is yes.
Okay.
Do I know that for sure? No, I don't.
Okay.
All I can, all I can do is just refer you to what Chicago Title provided, and I can't confirm for you with certainty who the beneficial owner of that land trust would have been.
Okay, that's good. So it looks like it's clear that Erwin Goldfarb bought the properties in 95, and, you know, the last 12 years, I guess, he's had them.
Well, according, yeah. And I believe, based on my conversations with Mr. Goldfarb, he has, and he is very accurate in his recollections generally. So I'm not saying it couldn't be a mistake, but my recollection was that he was very specific about that they had been working with the properties for 26 years.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mark and Andrew, if these were your properties, what would you want done with them?
I think we're both in agreement. I mean, we didn't bring any pretty pictures, but if we put money into 504 and had, and put a new building at 502 that helped subsidize putting, or putting too much money in 504, we could have a new building at 502 that would be safe, enhance the neighborhood, provide for all the requirements of the ordinances, and blend in beautifully with what we've got at 504. I mean, I think that's a win-win.
Well, I've lived here my whole life, and I've, so I've grown up my, I've seen buildings that, you know, were around when I was a young girl, and they're not around anymore. But life goes on, and I would guess that if the property is not salvageable as far as the money is concerned, that I think that other options need to be looked at, and that the city telling an owner what to do with their own property is a little far-reaching, especially if it can't be salvaged. And so that's where I stand on the position that I have.
Other questions?
Carol, I have two questions.
Okay, go ahead. Danielle?
For the representative of the property owners. The first question I have is, has, the statement has been made that especially 502 is not salvageable. So my two questions are, first, has there been an attempt to sell these properties to see if there's interest from other people in terms of salvaging them? And my second question is a little bit linked to what Dennis Roberts asked, which is, you say that, he talked about the exterior of the property, but in speaking to city staff, it sounds like the code violations on those buildings have been addressed in the recent past, and therefore they're currently up to code. So I'm trying to reconcile those two statements, one that is totally unsalvageable, and the second that it's up to code and there are currently people living there. So could you address those two issues?
The first issue involves whether or not we've either marketed the property or attempted to sell it to someone else, and the answer is no.
Okay.
I'd also say that we're, all options remain on the table, but we've not put a for-sale sign in the property, and we've owned it for quite a long time. So our goal is not to sell it, but all options are on the table. That's not the direction that either the architect or I have been put in. The second question involves the condition of the property, and there are code violations, as in any property that gets inspected are going to have, that were fixable. There are some items that are grandfathered in, and I'll let Andrew clarify that more. We have, in part, proposed redevelopment based on suggestions from the code inspectors themselves, who had recommended demolition because of the challenges with the buildings.
I would say in terms of, are the buildings restorable? Well, certainly, they're restorable, but anything is restorable if you want to pump enough money into it. The issue for the owner of the property is, it's not, it makes no economic sense to spend $3 million restoring a building that's only going to be worth $1 million when you're done. Now, as a business proposition, now those numbers were just thrown out there, that's not, you know, actual numbers we talk about, but-
Excuse me, could you repeat that, with the question, whether or not those numbers were realistic?
No, they're not realistic. I was just using them as an example.
Okay. So do you have a sense of what it would cost to rehab those properties? I mean, if you've done a cost-benefit analysis to say they're on and they can't be upgraded, then I'm assuming you've figured out how much it would cost to upgrade them, and how much money you bring in on the property, and have done a cost-benefit analysis to say, over, you know, 20 years, we won't be able to recover over five years, or this is the turning point in terms of recovering it. Has that cost-benefit analysis been done? And do you have a sense of how much it would cost to rehab these properties?
Well, partially yes and partially no. It's not my role with the owner to decide if the money he spends is going to be what the payback time is. That's part of his work, not my work. What I did do was go through the projects and identify the buildings, and identify the major issues that we'd have to bring up to code if we tried to restore the buildings. And essentially, what we would have to do is gut the buildings entirely and start over. Because there's so many code violations under the current building code to try to fix, that there's no way to fix them without starting over.
And do you have estimates for what that would cost, or?
I don't have any of that information with me.
Okay. And are you speaking of those buildings when you say that?
Yes.
You said yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Heather?
And our-
The question, this is Lynn.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you. Is it, you said you'd have to gut the whole building, so you're saying it's not a reasonable approach to do it like apartment by apartment?
No. For an example, in 502, there's a back stairway that is used for the access to four or five apartments that at one point is 2' 2 inches wide, which by current code has to be over 3 feet wide. There's no way to fix that without tearing at least five apartments completely apart to reframe the whole, the whole back half of the building. So if we're going to go to that extent to fix any of it, we need to go to that extent one time and fix all of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Heather?
And even though these homes are this, are being, these buildings are currently lived in, the reason that they, I guess they're to code for, but not to, there's a difference between being to code of things that can be fixed and being to code of the new building code. Is, am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
So that when you were to rebuild, if you gutted it, if you were to rebuild, there's a different code-
Right. Many of the-
Than what the codes are for an existing building.
Correct. Many of the problems, code problems in the building are grandfathered in because they were converted to apartments in the late '30s, I think, early '40s, when, I don't even know if Urbana had a building code, they just chopped it up however they wanted to. So if we go, if we go in and try to remodel the project, we have to remodel it to the current building code.
Other questions? Okay, if not, we'll get to this fairly quickly on the agenda. We have 10 additional people to speak. Phyllis Winters-Williams is next, followed by Karen Coomer.
I'm Phyllis Winters-Williams, 810 West Main in Urbana. I grew up here, too. We came on Kennedy's inauguration day in 1961. I went to Thornburn School. I'm very familiar with the properties, and then I worked with several people, and may have even slept with someone who lived in one of these houses at one point or another. Full of folkies, full of characters. They were chopped up, though, as, for two reasons. To help keep big houses running, it was a good way to get orders in when times were tough. And remember, we had a terrible housing shortage right after World War II. That was reinforced. My original house on Stoughton was the result of that. Life goes on, Heather, but life goes on poorly. And all you have to do, no, pardon me, but all you have to do is stand in front of 502 and 504 and turn south, and look at what's there. Saul Cohen's house is somewhere on Green Street, shadow of its former self. We let people do what they want, we let a land box church put in parking lots, and when the Baha'i sent a bird, we said, sure, go ahead, don't try to rebuild, you can just tear it down, now you can sell the land for parking. And we've got this ugly apartment house. Life goes on, but this is the same city council that also expressed regret, that we let a plain farmhouse on Main Street be torn down for the fireplace apartments. That once we look back then, look at what we did to the historic district, look at what we said to homeowners who put every dime they've gotten to these homes. I'm one of them. Come to the house walk. Designate, support this. You won't regret it. This is the only, there is one other point. You know, I'm a homeowner, and so we keep things up. If I need tuck pointing, I call PayCal. I don't let my basement wall bone and fall in. I've got to live there. I have to keep that up to have a property value. It's so ass-backwards, then, to see where these guys can come and say, well, it's fallen down. Duh! Do something! You know? So, thank you so much. Do what you can!
Following Karen Coomer is Maria Ryan.
I'm Karen Coomer, the executive director of the Preservation and Conservation Association. Here on behalf of our membership, specifically our Urbana members, but also our Champaign members, as twin cities, everyone has a stake in what happens here tonight. I'd like just to refresh memory back, actually, a couple decades now. In 1986, we did a survey of the downtown to campus area, noting all the historic buildings. We looked at every building between Lincoln and California and downtown Ray Street and, I'm sorry, University and California, Lincoln and the downtown. And we looked at every single building, building by building. We have forms, we have photographs, we have history on a lot of them. Main Street obviously stood out as a potential historic district that someday, hopefully, we will have. But also Elm Street and Green Street were particularly noted in that survey, along with other streets and buildings, houses in other areas. But on Elm Street and Main Street, at that time, they were zoned R6, very high density. And one of the things that came out of both our survey and the campus-to-downtown plan that was done at that time, was to try to rezone these two streets in particular to single-family, either R1 or R2. We succeeded on Main Street, due primarily to the efforts of the people who are moving back into that area on Main Street to become single-family homeowners, and recapturing the many apartments, the large houses that have been cut into apartments, and bringing them back and the neighborhood back to single-family. We lost on Elm Street. It stayed high-density because it was primarily owned at that time by rental landlords, and they didn't support it. And the few home settlers that were there were not enough to make enough effort to be able to convince people to rezone it. And some of that consequences we're still dealing with today. And some of that consequences we're still dealing with today. We have the big apartment building complex across from these two beautiful houses, and we have that horrible building that sticks out right next to them. Because of the 15-foot setback was allowed, rather than the average frontyard setback, because of the high-density. And that has destroyed that block. But in spite of all that, we are now seeing homeowners coming back and reclaiming this area, Elm Street and Green Street, once again, to single-family. And they're putting their investments in. Their hard work and their sweat equity. And so, we still have homeowner landlords that have milked a lot of these properties for many years, and have not done all the maintenance that have been required for 26 years on these buildings. If it needs a new roof on 502, why wasn't it put on five years ago, or whenever it was needed? I mean, people are correct. Single-family homeowners take care of their property to a large extent. A lot of landlords do also. A lot of landlords also do not. They bring in as much, milk the apartments for as much as they can, and then, once, you know, they get all their deferred income and everything else out of these apartments, then they tear them down to build something, not necessarily better, but something different there. That, even if you look at the one at 506 Elm Street, is in worse condition, actually, than 502 and 504, and is a lot less, is a lot younger, only being there about 15 or 20 years. Not 100 years like these two. I'd like to also say that, I'm sure you are aware of the historic and architectural significance of these two buildings. It was very well detailed in an extensive nomination prepared, one of the best that have been documented so far for Urbana. And we also would like to show that if these buildings are put on the National Register of Historic Places, which they're clearly eligible for, and if they're probably designated as Urbana local landmarks, and the ordinance does meet certain criteria, these buildings would be eligible for preservation tax credits, which would help in their rehabilitation. And I do know that there are people who are willing to take on this challenge, even on the condition that these buildings are, to restore them. Perhaps they won't have the 25, 30-plus apartments that are in these two buildings now, but they would have a lesser density, that would have larger, better apartments, more high-end to attract people, which, in effect, would also need less parking. There's not parking for those buildings, as there are now, much less for a large development in that area. So, basically, we're here to support the nomination of these buildings. We think it's very important, and a trend setting for Urbana, and we urge you to nominate both 502 and 504 as Urbana City landmarks. Thank you.
Any questions for Karen? Thank you. Following Maria will be Paul Bernard.
Hi, I'm Maria Ryan. I live at 1 Buena Vista Court, in the Buena Vista Court Historic District. And sometimes I comment to visitors that I live in Buena Vista Court where the Vista used to be Buena. The neighborhood, as others have noted, has, you know, taken some really severe hits as far as other historic buildings going by the wayside. There is still enough there that is significant to preserve. I think the city council, I know this would have been a council prior to the one that's seated right now, showed the commitment, took the time to pass a historic preservation ordinance, establish a historic preservation commission. And I think that what the council had before tonight is an opportunity to show substantive commitment to historic preservation. I think it is unfortunate that the current owner of these buildings does not support the landmark designation, but there is a viable community interest in having those buildings preserved, and so, I hope that the council will support the nomination and designate those homes as the landmarks that they are.
Questions? Thank you. Following Paul Bernard is Ivan Wyler.
I'm Paul Bernard, 1910 South Line. I'm a historian by trade, and I would simply like to say that, in my experience, societies that routinely allow their icons to be destroyed in favor of a quick profit, tend to lose their identities just as quickly. And I think, on a modest scale here, these houses are icons. Thank you.
Following Ivan Wyler is Bryan Adams.
I'm Ivan Wyler, 301 West High Street. I've been in Urbana for 17 years. I walk around the streets of Urbana. I've watched those buildings go downhill. I've seen that the owner conforms with whatever code the city demands, but doesn't care about upkeep, roofs, painting, the kind of care a beautiful old building deserves. This is sort of common. You reap the profit from a whole lot of clients, and then, after the building is a complete wreck, then you say, oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't possibly afford to restore it. I think these buildings deserve better.
Following Bryan is Bernadine Steak.
My name's Bryan Adams. I live at 412 West Elm Street. I live immediately east of these buildings that are being discussed tonight. Literally, the first thing I see every morning when I open my shades are those two buildings, and the last thing I see at night, when I close my shades to go to bed, are those two buildings. So, those buildings are very closely associated with my daily life. When we bought our house on Elm Street, we were always impressed by those two buildings, and we always wondered about who built them, and what was their architectural significance. But nobody could tell us anything about them. We went into the library, we looked at popular books on Urbana history, and aside from a picture of 502, which was labeled "A Beautiful Mansion," there was no history, or no information on those two buildings that are so distinctive and unique in the neighborhood. So, my partner, Alona Motkowski, myself, decided to research the houses, and we found some incredible information regarding them. We were able to reconstruct who lived in them, who built them, when they were built. It was a long, drawn-out process, but I think that we were able to give something back to the city by pulling together these nominations. And they are really, those buildings are really tangible links to a distinctive part of Urbana's history. It's like a picture's worth a thousand words. I think those buildings, in and of themselves, tell a lot about the history of Urbana, and I think it would be, it would be giving a gift to the city if you were to support the nominations and make them local landmarks. Thank you.
Questions? Brandon?
Yeah, briefly, Bryan, how many hours would you say you spent researching the history of these two properties before you wrote the nomination?
I would say probably a good 80 hours, maybe, a month's, or two months' worth of weekends during the winter, and when the weather was so bad that we couldn't work on our own house, I'd just spend Saturday, Sunday, in the Urbana Archives, as soon as they opened, as soon as they closed, going through old newspapers, one year after another. Especially with 502. 502 turned out to be a real, a real difficult one to reconstruct the history on. But I enjoy doing it. I mean, for me, it was, once I got into it, I really, it became like detective work. But I would say probably a month, maybe a month's worth of weekends.
Okay, and if I understand correctly, you were the first one to uncover the fact that 504 was a Royer-designed house. He was the most famous architect I think Urbana's ever had. Is that right?
Yes. I remember that day. I was getting towards closing time at the Archives, and I was just going through the local gossip column, which was characteristic of the papers back then, and it was just a one or two-line entry. Gus Freeman's having his new house, plans run up for his new house on Elm Street, Joseph Royer architect. And I almost fell out of my chair. I thought, how can it be that this house has been sitting there for over 100 years now, designed by Urbana's, you know, stellar architect? But additional research bore that out, that it was, in fact, designed by Joseph Royer. So, it was quite a discovery.
Amazing. Thank you.
Heather?
I heard Danielle bring up the, when Mark and Andrew were here, the options. And one of the options, she asked, you know, they were for sale. I guess, if that was an option, would you, or do you know people who would buy them, and would have the money to be able to refer them to the standards that are expected of the city in a new rebuild?
Yeah. Yeah. There are people, just having talked to people that are interested in preservation and are aware of those two houses, there are people that could, are willing to take those on as a challenge, and have experience with preservation and renovation, and see them as projects that could be taken on, and are worth taking on.
Well, and I guess my question there is, you spent a lot of time, 80 hours, researching that. I guess, it's not too hard to find a current owner's name, and maybe sit down and talk with him as a preservationist, and maybe explore the options with him. I think that would be an interesting avenue to have gone, to go down, or to have gone down. And I just wonder if that was explored by the Preservation Committee or not?
I think, we've lived there for about five or six years now, and we never really saw any effort to renovate them, and I, we never got the impression that there was any concern about the historic aspect of the buildings. So, I think that was why, and I remember contacting, a couple of years ago, seeing some people out there with measuring tapes, and something was going on, on the property. And I remember making a call to the company to find out what was going on, but I really didn't get any information. So, I just concluded that the current owners of the property had no intention, really, of maintaining them or...
Well, and I guess that kind of drives me to my question. If you saw that, and you were really concerned about it, I guess, why wasn't he addressed? Is my question, is if these were properties that the Historic Preservation wanted to be designated, why wasn't he contacted? Why wasn't, I mean, if, you say, because, because there was nobody doing any work, well, that would seem to be the reason why the Historic Preservation would want to contact him.
At that time, I'm not affiliated with a group or a Preservation Commission. We just, we just did it as concerned residents on the street. So, we just saw what was happening to the buildings, and we just decided to research them.
Well, we have, I understand that. I just, I just kind of, I'm not understanding why we have a Historic Preservation, and maybe, if the neighbors are so concerned, why it wasn't brought to the attention before? We want to landmark something that doesn't even belong to us.
Well, I think, no, I think the situation on Elm Street now, right now, and in the recent past, has been primarily rentals. And I think there are more and more single-family houses on the street, and I think because of that, there's more interest in the area now. At that time, I think that was sort of a gray zone between Springfield and Main Street, and Green Street to the south. Elm Street was sort of this twilight zone. There had been a lot of beautiful old mansions there, but as somebody else already said, just one by one, they went, and nobody really stood up for those houses either. And I think it was until people like us, and some other people who were buying the houses to live in, and to restore them, I think that sort of put the spotlight on these buildings.
I didn't get an answer.
Other questions? Danielle and Lynn, are you still with us?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks. Following Bernadine Steak is Jeremy Rice.
Hi, I'm Bernadine Steak, and I live at 304 West Iowa Street. And I know that there are many homes in Urbana that should be on the National Register of Historic Places. And I'm so pleased that we have people who are interested in these two special homes, and have done the research, and have worked so hard to set up the situation so that we could put them on the National Register of Historic Places. I was, like some other people, I guess, when the owners were saying how, what bad shape these buildings were in, I thought, well, why didn't they take care of them? I mean, they've had them, if they've had them for 26 years, there's no, they have no excuse for them being in the shape that they're in. They should have been taking care of them, because they're such beautiful homes, should have had the care that is needed in order to preserve them. I'm glad that we have Historic Preservation in Urbana. I'm hoping that these two homes will be just the beginning of more homes that are placed on the National Register of Historic Places, and on our, and our own register also. I guess, I just really, would really, really like you to put both the Sutton House and the Freeman House, would like, designate, like you, like to have you designate both the Sutton House and the Freeman House as historic, so that the process can go on. And I know there are other, there are people who would, who would very much like to preserve them, and could work to, to preserve them at this time. So, I don't think there's any problem if, of not finding people who want to do something with these homes, and who could buy them and take care of them. So, thank you very much. Would appreciate your positive vote tonight.
Questions for Bernadine? Next up is Jeremy Rice, followed by Joan Zagorski.
Hello, I'm Jeremy Rice, and I live at 5 East Illinois. And I wanted to start off by saying that, in my opinion, it's not a form of taking to preserve what's important to a community, that these houses are of historical importance to the greater community. And I see the landlord is, in these properties, is just trying to make more money. And the fact that they can go to plenty of places and build properties and make money, just makes this more crass, and just wrong, and I think that they should do that. If they want to make money, they can do it. They just don't have to tear down these historically important properties. That's all. It's a simple task, and I've been in the business for a while doing that, so. Taking one thing is one thing, and preserving it is another. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. Following Joan Zagorski is Alona Makovsky.
I'm Joan Zagorski, and I live at 1605 South Ray Street in Urbana. And I'm here to support saving the Sutton House and the Freeman House, and putting them on the Historic Register, Historic Preservation. And I just think it's so sad that we keep losing more and more of these beautiful old houses, that there's no way they can be duplicated. And I think, in this country, we tear down all the old beautiful houses, and then, we all go to Europe to see the old beautiful houses. And that's all. I just hope we can save these houses.
Thank you. Alona Makovsky?
I live at 412 West Elm Street, right across from the two buildings we are nominating. I'm one of the persons who wrote up the nominations. As Bryan said, every morning when we get up and pull up the curtains, we look at these two buildings. There are other buildings around us. They are modern apartment buildings. I don't look at them first, and I don't like to look at them. But when I look at these buildings, my spirit is lifted, and I'm ready to face the day. Unfortunately, many of these beautiful buildings in America... Unfortunately, many of these beautiful buildings in America are being torn down all over the country purely for profit purposes. Uh, with the loss of these buildings, we lose the beauty that lifts our spirit every day. When we walk the American streets, we see entire blocks turned into incredibly ugly paved-over parking lots where there is not a tree, not a bush, not a flower. We see very ugly, shilly-built apartment buildings. We see empty lots with weed going, growing all over. And among these, there are some old buildings that are still beautiful, and those are the buildings that we like to look at. I believe that people in America should stand up and start saving these beautiful buildings and not turning their cities into unsightly, depressing places. In addition to the beauty that these old buildings give to us, they also preserve history. They are the embodiments of American history. Once they are gone, no matter how, how similar a modern building is that's put there, that building just does not have that history. And nobody cares to explore the history because what symbolizes history is gone. We have to save these symbols of American history, not just important buildings in the capital, but important buildings in small cities because we are the people who make history. We have to save that part of American history. I'm here to ask the Commission, the council members, to nominate both buildings as historic landmarks.
Questions for Alona?
I, I would like to say that, uh, reading through this was really fascinating to, to, uh, the level of detail in here was pretty amazing and, uh, clearly a work of love to put this much detail and work into, into this, so thank you.
I've got one too. Go ahead.
Well, I, I really, I appreciate the, um, the fact that you also became an educator for historic research, and it was because of your class that you led at the Free Library in Urbana, um, I don't know when, back in February or January, that, um, it came to my attention anyways, that of all the work that, uh, you and Brian had done on research, and of course, now we've also got a few other, um, discoveries that have occurred in the archives that perhaps will bear fruit in the future. And so I'm just going to say that, um, you've turned into like the most dynamic pair of researchers. I hope your efforts haven't finished and that there'll be more future results.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we have, uh, thank you. We have a presentation from Pat Paletti of Public Works, and then we'll get into, uh, new business, which includes this case, these cases.
Um, this evening, it gives me a great pleasure and honor to recognize, um, one of our division managers in the Public Works Department. Um, so the background, annually, the American Public Works Association has an award for Supervisor of the Year, and this year, we nominated Pat Paletti, our public facility and parking manager in the Public Works Department. And, uh, he was, uh, awarded this, uh, award, uh, in our May annual meeting in, in Peoria. Just, uh, to give you a little background with Pat, Pat has been with the city and Public Works Department for over 27 years and has many notable accomplishments, but, um, just to main, since we're talking a lot about building and restoration this evening, three major projects that he was responsible for with managing the construction and the successful completion were the additions in the Public Works Center back in 1993 and the additions here at this building, which was a multi-million dollar accomplishment, and bringing the Community Development Department in, expanding the Police Department, and making it accessible, et cetera. And then most recently, um, the library, which was an eight million dollar facility. And, um, Pat got to know Fred and Deb and all the librarians on a first-name basis, but I think we'd all, uh, agree that, uh, that, uh, output is, is outstanding. But also, not only with his accomplishments, what he brings to the city, but also, um, in his personal life, he's involved with a lot of community activities and, uh, most notably the Prairie Center, and I think he's immediate past or current, uh, Chair of the Prairie Center and, and those other activities he's involved with years ago, Prairie State Games and such. So, this award kind of recognizes your accomplishments on the job and off the job too. And with Pat, uh, he receives this plaque for Public Works Supervisor of the Year for this year, and, uh, I think a round of applause for Pat for his hard work.
Okay, we, uh, have no, uh, reports from the Committee of the Hall. Are there any reports of special committees? Uh, that brings us reports of officers. Tom? Tom Carino, Economic Development.
I will keep this brief. Uh, you do have before you the Economic Development Report, uh, for this month. Uh, just to highlight a few items, uh, we do have some activity downtown, some new businesses downtown, a new restaurant along Main Street, uh, Starbucks is nearing completion, uh, new coffee shop at the library, Latte Da. Um, and we have a couple of major projects going on. We did, uh, this month have a series of Boneyard Creek Beautification Stakeholder Meetings, and our consultant has taken that input and gone back and started designing. Um, we also had, uh, FAR associates come into town to do some initial site planning for the Kerr Street Site, which is going to be a model affordably-priced, energy-efficient community. Uh, and we are also going to be issuing a request for proposal for a design study for the beautification of Cunningham Avenue. I think that was, um, uh, talked about a little bit at a previous council meeting. And, um, there was this month, uh, two meetings. One, uh, public meeting for the redevelopment of Orchard Downs, and then following that, there was an open house to ask consultants, uh, about their development plans for Orchard Downs. Uh, and then also, uh, the Public Arts Coordinator, um, organized the first annual Historic Preservation Commission High School Art Contest that was very successful. And then the, uh, one state arts conference was held locally at Krenert Center on May 17th and 18th, and that was a statewide, uh, arts, uh, conference. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, uh, or you're welcome to contact me and, and I can try to answer your questions one-on-one. Thank you.
Questions for Tom? Thanks, Tom. Okay, uh, next up are three related items. Ordinance number 200706048, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement as amended at 1714 East Airport Road. Uh, ordinance number 200706049, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Urbana, Illinois, rezoning at 714, 1714 East Airport Road from, uh, industrial to R2 single and to family. Uh, that comes from Plan Commission as Plan Case 2039 MO7. And, uh, ordinance number 200706050, an ordinance approving a major variance to allow an accessory structure in excess of 1,000 square feet in the industrial zoning district, uh, 714 East Airport Road. This is ZVA Case 2007 MAJO2. Paul, you, yes, go ahead.
Um, as you stated, we have three related cases here, which, uh, I hope we'll just kind of take all together. Um, the annexation agreement case was first heard by, uh, Urbana Plan Commission and City Council in 2006. At the 2006 meeting, the Plan Commission voted seven ayes and zero nays to forward the case to City Council with a recommendation for approval. And City Council approved the annexation agreement on July 17, 2006. Due to an error in the legal descriptions for that case, uh, we're asking the City Council to rehear and reconsider the proposed annexation agreement, uh, which includes a proposed rezoning, uh, upon annexation, uh, for the .97 acre portion of the property located outside the city limits at 1714 East Airport Road. Uh, our petitioners, Greg and Denise Reynolds, are the owners of this property. It's located partially in unincorporated Champaign County, um, and is a single-family house with a large accessory structure garage. Um, the proposed annexation agreement is a result of the petitioner's home being constructed across two individual lots, one that's in the county and the other that's in the city. And the petitioners have been working with the city to bring the property into compliance, uh, with city regulations. Um, the cases include this annexation agreement, uh, a major variance for that portion of the property that is in the city, and a zoning map amendment for that portion of the property that's in the city. And, uh, eventually, pretty soon here, we will have a subdivision to combine the two lots of the property. Uh, I think what I'm going to do is just kind of skip to the findings here for the annexation agreement and then go to findings for the rezoning and findings for the major variance, and then you can vote on them. Uh, so the findings for the annexation agreements, um, are the petitioners own this property located at 1714 East Airport Road. It's on two lots, one is in the county and one is in the city. And the subject of the annexation agreement is the Western Lot, which is zoned Ag2 in the county. The annexation agreement stipulates that the portion of the property located in the county will be rezoned from Ag2 agriculture to city R2 upon annexation. The proposed R2, um, zoning designation is consistent with the current land use of the property and the surrounding area. The proposed R2 zoning is consistent with the future land use designation of the property in the 2005 Conference of Plan. The proposed rezoning would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare, and the proposed rezoning appears to generally meet the LaSalle case criteria. Uh, within the annexation agreement is a major variance for the proportion, excuse me, for the portion of the accessory structure that is located out in the county at this time. Uh, the proposed annexation agreement requires that the petitioners submit an application for the major variance for that portion that is currently in the city. And the annexation agreement also requires the application for the zoning map amendments of the portion that is currently in the city to be rezoned from IN Industrial to R2 Single Family Residential. The annexation agreement requires that the petitioners to prepare and record a minor subdivision plot. And, let's see, number 11, the property is the subject of a previous annexation agreement, uh, and this one, this new annexation agreement will supersede it. So the council has the options to approve, um, the annexation agreements, um, approve with recommended changes or to deny. And staff recommendation and the recommendation of the Plan Commission is for approval. Did you want to vote on that, or should we just go through the other ones?
Just go, go through all three.
Okay. Um, for the rezoning, uh, the rezoning is for the .90 acre tract of property that is currently within the city. It is currently zoned IN Industrial, and it is proposed to rezone to R2 Single Family Residential. Uh, the Urbana Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on May the 24th and voted four to, to recommend that the City Council approve the rezoning. The findings for this, number one, the petitioner's property is located in both unincorporated Champaign County and the city of Urbana, and the rezoning is for the property that is located in the city limits. The proposed R2 Single Family Residential zoning designation would be consistent with the current land use of the property. It is consistent with the land use designation of the 2005 Urbana Conference of Plan, and it, rezoning will correct the current split zoning on the property and prevent its continuation when the western portion is annexed into the city as R2. The proposed rezoning would ensure that appropriate regulations are applied to the subject property. Um, the rezoning will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare, and the rezoning appears to generally meet the LaSalle case criteria. Council has, in this case, the options of approving the rezoning, uh, or if denying a rezoning request, uh, council should articulate findings supporting the denial. Uh, Plan Commission voted again four to, to forward this rezoning request with a recommendation of approval, and staff concurs with the recommendation. For the major variance, um, this applies again to that portion of the property that is within the city limits. Uh, the Urbana zoning ordinance states that homes larger than 1,500 square feet may have an accessory structure up to 50% of the home's floor area or 1,000 square feet, whichever is larger, I'm sorry, whichever is less. Uh, the accessory structure which crosses the property lines is approximately 3,500 square feet, uh, and this major variance request is to allow the half of the structure that is on the lot in the city to be about 1,700 square, 17, 1750 square feet, um, and that's a request for about a 75% increase in the permitted size of the structure. Findings in this case, the Zoning Board of Appeals voted five zero to adopt the findings. Uh, and just to, well, really shorten this, the subject property has these two lots. The property is currently zoned IN Industrial in the city, uh, and this rezoning, uh, well, the rezoning application to, will rezon that property, uh, that is zoned IN Industrial to R2 Single Family Residential, and that is a primary, uh, impetus for the, uh, major variance because this will bring it into alignment with what is required in the R2 District in the future. Uh, let's see. The special circumstances concerning the accessory structure are that the structure was built prior to the petitioner's ownership of the property, and the practical difficulty in strict compliance would mean that the structure would need to be demolished. It would, the variance will not serve as a special privilege because the structure was constructed prior to the petitioners purchasing the property, and the circumstances included some confusion about the location of the property line and a permit, uh, issued in air by county zoning officials, which resulted in the structure being built across the line of city and county jurisdiction. Hardship in this case with strict compliance, again, would be requiring the demolition of the structure. And there's also the practical difficulty of compliance with regulations of both the two jurisdictions in the county and the city. The variance is necessary due to the special, excuse me, is necessary due to the special circumstances that we've just stated, and, uh, finally, the petitioners wish to preserve their right to reconstruct the accessory structure should it ever need to be replaced. So council has the options to approve the variance, to approve the variance with certain terms and conditions, or to deny the variance request. And as I stated, the Zoning Board of Appeals voted five zero to forward the case with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, and if everybody's still with us, uh, this is something the council voted on July of last year, uh, and it's back before us because of a technical glitch. Oh, that's been what recently caught?
Uh, pretty much, yeah. When it was, when we were bringing forward to the council, um, the major variance and the zoning, uh, and the rezoning, I noticed that we'd actually had the wrong, um, legal description of the property that had kind of propagated itself through the cases for the last year.
Brandon?
I move approval of all three ordinances in omnibus fashion.
Second? So, it's been moved by Brandon and seconded by Robert Lewis. Brandon?
I just wanted to briefly mention, I understand that the two Plan Commissioners dissented in this case, and I understand their reasoning, that they're concerned about a large garage being there in perpetuity, but I just don't feel that rises to the level to vote no here. I think the other factors, um, like the large industrial, you know, buildings further to the west, the much larger garages, the setback of this particular garage, um, to me, mean that it's, it's okay to do this, that the, the size of the garage just doesn't rise to the level where this should hold up, um, the issue and the final resolution of this property. So, I support it and encourage others to, again.
Dennis?
Um, I'm going to support the, the, uh, the resolution. We already went through this before, but I do have a couple of questions that I guess have come to me now, uh, since reading this again. One is, um, uh, this law become a residential lot. Is this lot potentially subject in the future because of its depth, um, subject to, um, being divided, subdivided?
Um, potentially, it could be subdivided. Uh, any new lot would have to have frontage on the road, um, so it would have to be subdivided in such a way as to provide a flag lot, or if future developments, uh, perhaps to the east, um, created a public road, then the western half, I'm sorry, the northern half in the back there could potentially get access on the road over there, so, yeah.
And I guess what I was wondering is, um, is it, is there any potential for this building, which apparently now, the, if the accessory building, structure, which is, um, a huge building, bigger than the house, or at least as big as, um, would, in, in having been in an industrial, um, zoning, is there any likelihood? zoning, is there any likelihood that it could, could become subdivided and take on a new use?
No. No, that's one of the reasons that we're having the R 2 zoning. That zoning is residential, so potentially uses that are permitted in the R 2 district could occur there.
What about, what about business use of home? Is there, do you think that there is a possibility that a person might own this house and, and run a, run a business use in home and use this as a, you know, a workshop or something?
Well, they, they could request a home occupation application, but in order to get a home occupation application, the, what, the extent of the home occupation has to be, you know, subordinate to the home. The way that the, the way that that was originally constructed, it, in the zoning ordinance, it really contemplated things like an attorney or a real estate agent who was working out of, you know, one bedroom as an office, that kind of thing, or as somebody who did some kind of part-time things in woodworking in their garage or something like that. To do a home occupation in a garage that size, I mean, it, you know...
I mean, if I wanted to, you know, repair cars?
Well, I mean, well, part of the thing with home occupation is, there's two categories of it, and the more intense category means you can have one employee. So I'm not sure what you could do with one employee in a garage that size, you know, unless you were a broker selling really expensive classic cars or something like that.
Well, you could be very noisy with one person.
This is true.
Okay, I'm just looking at potential problems, but overall, I guess that would be an issue that would come up in the future for a future council situation, or the, would come back to us if we found that it was how to use. So I guess I'm going to say, I wanted to explore that, so we knew what we're getting into, but, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have three ordinance in front of, three ordinances in front of us in omnibus fashion, numbers 2007, 06048, 49, and 50. Seeing no further discussion with the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Ms. Shannawith?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smyres?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Those three pass 7-0. Thank you. Next up is ordinance number 2007, 06045, an ordinance designating a historic landmark at 502 West Elm Street, the Sutton House. This comes from the Historic Preservation Commission as case number HP 2007 L 01. Robert Myers.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. We're here. Thank you. Again, this is Historic Preservation Case Number HP 2007 L 01. It's an application by Bryan Adams and Alona Mikovsky to designate 502 West Elm Street, the Sutton House, referred to as Sutton House, as a local historic landmark. And as you've become aware tonight, Erwin Goldfarb, in care of campus property management, is the property owner. The property owner has submitted what the ordinance calls a registered preference against the nomination. That's been submitted by the property owner. A copy is attached, is in your application packet. The petitioners have also submitted an application for designation of neighboring 504 West Elm Street, which you're also aware of. And just to be clear, there was a reference tonight to, to errors in the application, and I just wanted to note that city staff detected slight irregularities, both in the application and in the petitioner's response in terms of the registered preference, and something called defects on base of petition. We gave both parties, to be fair, we gave both parties a chance to correct those irregularities, and both parties did so. So we find that both of the submittals from both parties are, are complete and correct at this point. Just so everyone will know, should the application for designation be approved, the owners would have to obtain what's called a certificate of appropriateness to do exterior work on the property. That would include demolition. So if the property owners wish to demolish the buildings, they could do so with a certificate of appropriateness issued by the Landmark Commission. There's also a, there's also an avenue, if designated, defined that the properties aren't economically viable or feasible, there is an application process for that as well. So in the case of a property that is designated as a local landmark, but it's just not feasible to, to repair, the property owners have an opportunity to make this application, make the case, and it can be either accepted or rejected by the, by the city through a certain process. At the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, under the ordinance, there's two different meetings that they hold. One is to review the criteria for designation and see if the application meets the criteria. And at their April 4th meeting, commission did make a preliminary determination that the Sutton House qualifies for designation as a local landmark, and there's a detailed analysis of those criteria in your, in your packet. I'm not going to review all of those again tonight. And then on May 2nd, the Preservation Commission held a public hearing, and at that time, eight people spoke in favor of designating the Sutton House as a local landmark, and one person spoke in opposition. That was the, the property owner. And in addition to that, city staff received, about that time, 36 communications in favor of, of designation, most in the form of emails. So at the close of the public hearing, the Preservation Commission voted unanimously to recommend to the city council that the Sutton House be designated as a local landmark. And again, if you look in your, in your application packet, the applicants have provided a really detailed analysis or history and analysis of the property, including the fact the property was, is associated with the Sutton family. Royal Sutton was former Urbana mayor and known as the Brick King of Champaign County. The house was built in 1889, and it's an excellent example, according to the application, of Queen Anne architectural style, and is one of the few remaining examples of this style in the city executed in brick, and it's the only, excuse me, it's also, I believe, the earliest Queen Anne example that we have here in the city. Just to jump to summary, this information pretty much summarizes what's in your, your packet. Again, the property is a rare surviving example of Queen Anne construction and brick in the earliest identified Queen Anne style home in Urbana. The Sutton House was a prominent local business and politics and considered part of the city's social elite in the late 1800s. The property is a rare surviving example of Queen Anne construction in brick, again. In, in that regard, it's representative of distinguishing characteristics of an architectural type, valuable for the study of a period. The Sutton House is not a, a notable work of a master designer or architect that we're aware of. The Sutton House is identifiable, visual feature in the community, owing to its asymmetrical design, its square attic tower that's so identifiable, that cat slide roof off to the left that so many people refer to, that corner pavilion where the, at the entryway, and also that characteristic wraparound porch with the Queen Anne detailing. It's not a particularly fine or unique example of a utilitarian structure, and it's not known to be of archaeological significance. The reason I go into some of those that do and don't meet, those are based essentially on the criteria for designation. So on, on May 2nd, the Preservation Commission voted six in favor and none against to recommend that the city council approve the application, and the city staff likewise recommends for approval. And once again, because the property owners submitted a valid registered preference form, in order to approve this application, it would take five affirmative votes, so it would take a super majority of all the members holding office at the time.
Dennis?
Well, of course, we know that these are rather unique homes. Probably in casual passing by, anybody would be curious about them because of not only their size and prominence, but also their quirky and interesting architecture. And of course, the city council has, has indicated an interest and a dedication to do, to support the historic nature of the town, and the Historic Preservation Commission was created to facilitate that. I did wonder about the, the one specific complaint that the petitioner, the, the owners of the property brought up, which was a complaint about the legal description of the property and of the property owner. So I went on to, on the webpage of the Champaign County Assessor, for, which is a public information webpage, and it is where anybody in town would go to find out not only what the assessment of a property might be, what the, what the pin number of the ID of the lot might be, and who the owner is. And in the case of, this is 502 or 504?
502.
502. The, the owner is listed by the Champaign County Assessor as campus property management. So I thought, well, if you were a private citizen and you wanted to go and find out who the owner was, although this might not be the most exact legal information you could find, it's probably what you would accept, because it is, after all, a document, a public report by the county assessor. So I printed off a copy of that page from the webpage to show that these things can be, the fact that they had, that the petitioners had originally mentioned campus property management as the owner is probably where they got that information. And I also found that was true on the other property at 504, that the same thing came up as the ownership. So I thought it was, I thought it was a fair complaint, a legal complaint, and I've tried to understand how it might have happened, and I think I've found out how.
Brendan?
I guess if there's no further questions, I would move approval of this ordinance to accept the application of 502 West Elm Street as a historic landmark.
I can.
So it's been moved by Brandon, was that Danielle?
Yes.
And seconded by Danielle. Any further questions or comments? Okay, I'd like to make something, say something real quickly then. And this applies to the other issue before us, too. It strikes me that these are two very significant buildings that are, have essentially been brought to the brink of demolition through neglect, and many of you have heard me speak on that issue before. A number of years ago, I was driving through central Indiana and taking, my son was at a camp in, in the middle of Indiana, and we went north out of town to, to find a restaurant, and we ended up in Plymouth, Indiana. This is a town about halfway between Culver and South Bend, and we're driving through this town, and all of a sudden, I'm on a, on the, on the road, the main road into this community, and it's house after house of restored 100-year-old-plus homes that are absolutely gorgeous. It made an incredible statement for that community that, you know, here were 50 houses that were in immaculate shape, that, you know, coming right out of the main downtown of this community. And that image has struck, has stayed with me ever since. I remember that town for those features and the commitment that community has made to preserve both its downtown, and it has some mall out on the edge of town, we found that too, and, and it has, you know, some, some nice industries that I think actually is the place where all those crossbeams that go on the interstate get built, you know, the big metal things. So, and then on Saturday, I was at a wedding in Allerton Park, and there's another, you know, one of the seven wonders of Illinois, and, and driving back, of course, if you come in on Interstate 72, you go down University Avenue in Champaign. And what do you see? House after house, big houses, in the section near Central High School, they're old, you know, an older part of their community, that are in immaculate shape. People have kept them up. You know, it's not perfect, but there's been a commitment there to those homes. You can find those homes in Urbana, but you have to really look. You have to, you know, you have to detour from sort of the main drags and go down Main Street to see how those homes, so these similar, same, same kinds of homes can be preserved. What you don't see, and what we should be seeing, is the same thing down Green Street. You go down Green Street and, you know, where, where we should see, like you see coming in on University Avenue, a statement about the city of Urbana, it's not there. So hopefully, we can, we can do something. There are a number of issues that have been brought up, a lot of great emails from different people, and ultimately, this is an identity issue for a community, and it is about the greater community good. I, I think those are all legitimate, that's why we have state laws, that's why we have government to, to, you know, moderate between the individual and, and society. So I, I think these are very, very, very important. One of the funniest comments I got in all the emails, and there was a lot to read, was that the wrong property has been designated for being torn down. They suggested that 506 is the property that really needs to come down. So I assume that, 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 you know, I support the designation, obviously, and, and hopefully, people can step up and figure out how to save these properties. Hopefully, it's not too late, and if we don't vote for this, we don't even give ourselves a chance to save these properties. So I think we have to do this. Hopefully, it's not too late, but let's, let's give it a try. So I, I will vote in favor. Any other comments, discussion?
Oh, I, I have a statement.
Okay, Danielle, then Heather.
I think from just looking at a legal standpoint, in terms of what our ordinance says, this is kind of a no-brainer vote in that, I don't think there are properties that could meet the spirit of our ordinance that are, you know, I guess more indicative of what it is that we're trying to salvage in our community. So in that sense, I think the vote is clear. I, I suspect this vote might be easy, but the issue is the next step. And the, and the next step is for the community to really come together if the property owner can, and to figure out how we can salvage these properties. Having lived in Urbana for 12 years and seen from at least the outside, it, it does not appear to me that the properties have received much care. I walk by those properties every day, I definitely see what kind of activity happens, and so it's probably the case that it, there's significant upgrades that are required to these properties. But I think, I think the house that I live in is the perfect example, because the house that I live in, which is at 412 West Illinois Street, just a couple of blocks away, this, this house had been a rental property for a number of decades, and according to my neighbors, I have been told that my house was considered, even by the people who lived in the neighborhood, to be so run down that it was not salvageable. So that same argument that I heard from the, from the folks who own the property today, I heard from my own neighbors about the property that I live in today. 412 West Illinois Street is a 100-year-old Victorian house in perfect condition, and it's in perfect condition because it was salvageable, luckily by two, folks who were, two owners before myself, who decided to put in the energy and time to salvage this property after it had been left to basically run down to the point that it was a code problem in the community. So I think that, I, I kind of feel like I live inside of a, an example of how properties that were very quick to say are not salvageable actually are, which is the reason why I asked the question. And I think this is the question that if the owner, that the property would like to gain a certificate of appropriateness to demolish this property, I think the questions are... our staff needs to ask, and the commission needs to ask them, is show us the numbers. Show us your past profits, your past investment or lack thereof, the cost benefit to restore these properties. I think it's too easy to say, I mean, today I asked the question, I appreciate that Andrew was able to give the example of the staircase. It's not that I necessarily disagree with his professional opinion, I respect him as an architect, but the question is, it's a little bit of a subjective call to say when something isn't profitable, okay? And so in some ways, if the current landlord decides that the current property cannot be profitable to him, then perhaps he needs to consider whether or not the community, or there are other people in the community who perhaps have a different idea of what would be profitable and where historic preservation might play a greater role in their decision-making process with these properties. So I guess I want to urge all the folks who send emails out to the council, thank you. We always love to hear from folks. We live in a vibrant democracy in Urbana, it's great to live in Urbana. And it's also the case that this, this issue is not over. I think council makes our decision today and the decision to me, and I hope to all the council members, is fairly clear, which is, this fits our ordinance by law. This makes a lot of sense for us to do, but, but the issue isn't over at that point. We really have to figure out how to actually pull together to help to restore these properties, especially if the landlord feels that that is not a possibility for him.
Heather.
I feel like I hear that, you know, there's historic preservation that wants to designate these homes, and then I hear the property owner. And this is his property. And I think it's, it's nice that these homes are there, and these buildings that have been divided into apartments are there, but I also believe that maybe some other steps could have been taken before just having the Historic Preservation Commission designation for these, such as asking the homeowner, the building, the man Irwin, if, if they were purchasable, if they could be purchased. And so when I vote tonight, on four, the 502, I will vote no, and on 504, I will vote yes. And I know it sounds like I'm splitting hairs, but from what I hear is that 502 is not in the condition that it can be salvaged, but 504, there's a possibility. And so that's what, how I'm going to vote, and I, I'm really torn, because if this were my property, I would feel like people were going over my head as a property owner, and I wouldn't appreciate that.
Dennis, then Robert, or Robert, then, Dennis, Dennis, then Robert.
Who would you like to go first? Dennis, you.
I will go. Well, of course, I'm very interested in this, this is like our first opportunity to act in a proactive way, to begin to contribute toward the, perhaps, the renovation of many of our homes, and I really do support that intent. I can agree that the winnings, the win-win situation would be that the, whatever result comes from designating this as a landmark property tonight, if we do so, would allow in some manner the owners to participate, or either participate in the renovation of the properties, or at least the preservation and the status of the properties. Or if they feel like it's something that is larger, a project that they, they don't see the financial or the, the moral burden or whatever is adequate to their needs, that they would consider offering the properties to other groups or an organization or something, or maybe individuals who could potentially do something with them, rather than to demolish them. I think if they're demolished, they're never going to come back, and even if you, if you took all the architectural features of these buildings and put them in a new structure, you would merely be aping the true historic quality without actually providing any sustenance to the, a new project. I could foresee that it would take, I mean, there's no timetable for the ultimate restoration or improvement of a building, and if we, if, if these were preserved today, and it took 35 years to correct the deficiencies in them, well, a little bit at a time would make ultimate change, and the next generation that comes by would be very thankful. There's many projects that a city takes on that have, are long-term in their planning, even to the point of remediating seepages coming out of its waste, its waste pile, closed garbage pile. So if the city can take 30 years or 50 years to remediate a seep from the garbage dump and feel like it's money well spent, I think that, that to preserve a house that has certainly more character and value, and taking a long-term, objective view of it in the process, has great value and should be considered. There's one other thing that has come up twice, to my knowledge, that I find a little bit disturbing, and maybe it's useful to kind of just suggest a cautionary tone. I've heard in comment that occurred at this, at the discussion about the preservation qualities of these properties, and also one on East Green Street in my neighborhood, that when talking to the, to the owner of the property, city staff who were out to inspect it and do inspection jobs, actually are heard to advise demolition of these buildings. And I think that it's good to advise the property owner to the level of repairs that might be necessary to preserve them, but I would kind of prefer that, that city staff not advise the ultimate fate of a building, let that be the property owner's decision. So I would just like to say that in passing.
Robert.
Well, I just wanted to thank all of those that put forth the effort to bring this story to the city council, staff's work, and all the emails that I received. And I was, it was not in my area, but I got a lot of emails, and I met with people in the neighborhood, and I had an opportunity to look at the structures. I've had experience myself with renovation of historical facilities. I know it's a major undertaking, but I did hear tonight that the owners said they had not taken a lot off the table. They are leaving the doors open for opportunity to work with them, the community, I'm saying, in terms of how they could go about preserving these buildings. And sometimes, when this situation occurs, we have to think a little bit outside the box in order for this to occur. And it behooves the community, as well as the owners, to try and work together, to try and come to a resolve that it's beneficial to the community as a whole, and I would hope the outcome would allow this to occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no further comment, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Ms. Schenowith? Yes. Is that your vote, Ms. Schenowith?
Yes, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
That passes six one, and the related ordinance number 2007 06046, an ordinance designating a historic landmark at 504 West Elm Street, the Freeman House, Historic Preservation Case Number HP 2007 L 02. Paul, or Robert?
Okay. Again, this is the property right next door, 504 West Elm Street. Again, it's the one with the prominent columns in the front, supporting the classical revival portico. The applicants are Bryan Adams and Alona Makovsky. The property owner, again, is Irwin Goldfarb, in care of Campus Property Management, and they have submitted a registered preference form, which is for, against designation. And in, this is the same case as before, where we found after submittal for documents on both parties, we did find some irregularities, we gave both parties a chance to resubmit corrected versions, if they chose to, both parties did, so at this point, we find that the, well, the application and the registered preference are both complete and correct. And again, should the application for designation be approved, the owners would be required to obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission for exterior changes, including demolition, and a certificate of economic hardship would also be possible if the property owners believe that it's economically not viable for renovation. And just so you'll know, there's a very detailed section of our zoning ordinance that specifies how this would take place. Very detailed information that the property owners can choose to provide to make their I won't go through those criteria, but I just want to let you know that that's, that is a part of our ordinance currently. The Historic Preservation Commission, they did hold two meetings, per the ordinance, the first on April 4th, 2007, and they did make a preliminary determination that the property qualified for designation as a local landmark under five of the, of the criteria in the ordinance. In terms of details of those criterias, you can, criteria, you can refer to your staff report. At their second meeting on May 2nd, that was actually a public hearing, and at that public hearing, eight people spoke in favor, one person spoke against designation, that was the property owner's representative. And we received, again, about 36 communications during that, that first meeting. I failed to mention it, but in the last couple of days, I've also received additional 37 communications, both emails and, and letters, and probably vast majority of those just today and even this afternoon. So in total, we have about, I personally received about 73 communications. Seventy-one of those were in favor of designation, and two of those were against, and.
Those are all unique?
No, I don't know that as a fact. The first set was received at the first public hearing, the second set received in the last couple of days, so I don't know that those are all unique, no. At that May 2nd meeting, the commission recommended in favor, at the close of public hearing, recommended in favor designation by unanimous vote. And just quickly, a background on the house, Gus Freeman was owner of Urbana's first movie theater, The Princess, and had the classical revival house built. The architect was Joseph Royer, construction was in 1902, and just previous to construction of this house, Joseph Royer had designed the Champaign County Courthouse. So Joseph Royer is known as probably our most prominent architect here locally, at least in the historical period. The findings, the Historic Preservation Commission did find that the property is unique for Urbana, because it, it is what's called a high-style residential example of the classical revival architectural style, meaning that's, it's a rare example, maybe even a unique example here in Urbana. And that's, that's characterized by those large fluted columns with, with the portico and, and also some of the Greek revival detailing that you'll see, or classical detailing that you see. The house was built for Gus and Alice Freeman, so it is associated with important people with the local history. Gus Freeman owned The Princess Movie Theater, and his wife, Alice Bucy Freeman, was a member of the prominent Bucy family. I mentioned that it's a, it's a rare high-style example, and it does retain a high degree of integrity, meaning that it hasn't been changed that much over the years, so you can still perceive the historic character, it's, it's still there. What you're looking at is largely original, at least from those portions that are of the public concern. Areas of public concern are from, especially the, the street facade, that's the primary area of public concern. The Freeman House, in this case, is a, is a notable work of a master designer and architect. I mentioned Joseph Royer. In addition to courthouse, he designed a flatiron building, Urbana High School, Urbana Free Library, Lincoln Hotel, and their Urbana Post Office, I believe also the Champaign Country Club as well. It is an identifiable and familiar visual feature in the community, especially because of that prominent classical Greek portico supported by those columns. It's, doesn't qualify under archaeological or the utilitarian criteria, that's part of our ordinance. But again, the Historic Preservation Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval. City staff likewise recommends for approval, and because we have received a registered preference request, this, in order to approve this, it would take five affirmative votes.
Questions for Robert?
I have a quick one. Is this, is this house unique in the county, in the state? How, how unique is this property?
Well, in the application, it's noted that it's the only known example in Urbana of the classical revival style, a high-style example of this.
But we don't know how much further out we could take that.
Right, there's, there's lots of other classical revival style buildings in the state, there's no, there's no question about that. But in terms of a local landmark, it does meet this criteria as a local landmark.
Danielle, or Lynn?
Yeah, I can't, it's cutting out for some reason, I'm sorry.
Okay. Did you, did you catch all that from Robert?
I caught quite a bit of it, yes. About 80 percent. Yeah, it's just kind of cutting in and out.
Okay, we probably need to be turning off our mics more carefully on our end.
You can just lean into the microphone a little bit, that would help.
Okay, thanks. Further questions, comments? A motion would be appropriate. Dennis.
Yes, I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance number 2007 06046, an ordinance designating a historic landmark, 504 West Elm Street, the Freeman House, Historic Preservation Case Number HP 207-L-02. And that's to preserve it and to landmark it as a historic designation.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Dennis, seconded by Heather. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Ms. Schenowith?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks, Robert, thanks, everybody else. 2007 06047, an ordinance approving a major variance to allow a 126 percent increase in the display area of an institutional sign in the R4 medium-density multiple-family residential zoning district at 1500 North Lincoln Avenue. This comes from the ZBA, as case 2007 MAJ 05. Robert? Sorry, I'm sorry.
We've got other business.
Folks, could you take it outside, please?
All right.
It's been asleep for a long time.
We'll make it on our own without it. Oh, there it is, just need to select this thing. All right, we'll figure it out. American Dow Sign Crafters, on behalf of the Vineyard Church, has submitted this application. It's a request for major variance to install a 56.6 foot square foot wall sign on their church at 1500 North Lincoln Avenue in the R4 district. It's a 126 percent increase they're asking for, which is a major variance. So, the section 9-4 of the Urbana zoning ordinance states institutional uses such as churches are allowed one side, one sign for frontage, either a freestanding sign or a wall sign, and the maximum area of those signs are 25 square feet each. Video? Okay.
Are you wanting this?
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll continue here. The vineyard made a significant expansion in 2005, included a new wing they built out, and they paved their parking lot. The new, the sign is to go on the new wing, which is set back 250 feet from Lincoln Avenue. They currently have a 20 square foot monument sign in addition, but since they have two frontages, they're allowed the two signs, which I'll show you in a minute. Okay. The vineyard is located in a commercial corridor, North Lincoln Avenue, it's across from a gas station and convenience store, across Lincoln, across the other street, they've got the four-by-four place. So these are all commercial properties which are allowed significantly larger amounts of signage. As I said before, the sign's proposed to be 60, 56.6 square feet in area, which is generally in proportion to the area of the wall that it's going to be mounted on. I have a graphic, you can't really see, but the last exhibit shows the wall it's going to be mounted on. This little section here is 1,000 square feet. The whole thing is about upwards of 5,000 square feet, so 56 square feet is not very significant, especially from 250 feet away. So the applicant is claiming that this will allow visitors to help identify their site when they have new parishioners and other visitors coming in. It'll help with safety, people will be able to identify the church when they're driving in, change lanes, things like that. The variance is necessary because it's, there's a special condition due to the site. The special condition is the site, or the wall is 250 square feet, 250 feet setback from Lincoln Avenue. If it were right up on Lincoln Avenue, 25 square feet would be okay, but they're saying 250 feet back, it's just too small. The variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, because the proposed sign is smaller than signs existing in the neighborhood. The gas station's got several signs, the Honda place also has more signs, more square footage. The variance will not cause a nuisance, because it will face the commercial corridor and not any residential areas. It will not have any moving parts, but it will be internally illuminated with some form of soft lighting. The variance represents minimum derivation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance in that this is the smallest they could make it still be visible from Lincoln Avenue.
Turn.
Heather, go ahead.
Are you done?
I was just going to give our recommendation. The zoning board of appeals heard the case on May 16th, they voted five to none to recommend approval, to forward to council and recommend approval with the following conditions. The conditions are that the sign closely resembles submitted sign plan here, also that the zoning administrator shall be authorized to approve minor changes to the plan as necessary, and that the development shall meet all other applicable standards and regulations in the zoning ordinance and subdivision and land development code. And I'll take questions.
I am a member of the Vineyard Christian Church, and I have a personal relationship with the senior pastor there, Happy Lehman, he married my husband and I, so I have a vested interest in, in this sign, and I personally spoke with Pastor Lehman, and they are a friend of the city. When they, when we did the expansion, they went by the codes, and when they were asked to change things, they, they did, and they were, they worked well with the city and would like to continue to work well with the city, and so I would move approval of this, of this ordinance.
This is a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, so moved by Heather, seconded by Dennis, go ahead, Dennis.
I guess I didn't clearly get a vision of what the material the sign was made of, and the illustration, I guess it looked to me like it was painted on the wall, but now I heard that there's going to be soft illumination, so this is like a boxed lit, backlit sign of some type, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, that's what I was curious about.
Also, should be pointed out that the church used a monument sign out on the street, which we are encouraging, of course, so, to their credit. Any further comments? Let's see, we'll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now we move on to item from Old Business, E1, which is an ordinance number, is ordinance number 2007-05-044, an ordinance approving a text amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Urbana, Illinois. This comes as plan case number 2002-T06, and is deferred from our May 21st council meeting. And staff has a revised set of maps, we got a revised memo from staff as well, and they've answered a number of questions that I had over the week.
Yep, we just had a couple quick comments on the revisions. The maps, Robert's passing out, are the very latest revisions, it's a work in progress. We did do a little perimeter to indicate the extent of the survey. Again, this was just intensive survey area we studied after driving around the whole city and found where the problems were concentrated the most. Exhibit B showing the strategies, we did some changes. We merged strategies two and three, which were green and orange before, now it's just green. There's a little confusion there. We thought it would just be simpler to make it just one strategy, since it has the same effect. And the effect is, we're going to be looking at these properties, seeing how many parking spaces they have, and if they have more than they're allowed for the ordinance, we might end in removing them, but we will not in any way be paving over parking spaces in the R2 zoning district. Couple more changes, we incorporated some of the ordinance changes suggested by council at the last meeting. The phrases "including new environmentally friendly technologies" is now on the list of usable paving surfaces. And on page 81 and 82, we changed around the order in the paving surfaces for accessory parking spaces, so that it's a little clearer. The surfaces are asphalt, brick, concrete, and gravel contained by curb or landscape edging, or other as approved by the zoning administrator. And the last change here is, we've incorporated all these text amendments into the adopting ordinance instead of referencing a outside document.
Questions for Jeff. Dennis?
Well, I probably, one simplification, the combining of the orange and the green squares into one, is it, you know, probably a streamlining, I appreciate that. I have one question about Exhibit B map, and maybe this is like a non-issue, but when I see a recommendation of, in the, for the B coloration, it is restore and tidy. Tidy is such a non-planning kind of designation, and it is so vague, I wonder if then staff would, and I looked at the, I looked at the wording in the document, and I didn't see any definition or for what a property owner would be required to do in restoring and tidying. I don't see any, any guidance there, it's so.
Contain.
So, so if we're going to use some rather vague recommendations, I would hope that the staff would come up with specific recommendations, and I have three, all right? These don't have to be the ones you pick, but if you're going to say tidy, a word I really dislike. It might be that the, the property owner will be required to remove gravel and rock from the lawn and return it to the driveway, or that it might be that, that the driveway surface needs to be graded or evened or leveled, or it might be that curbing is required to contain this surface. And there might be five others, which I didn't invent, but I'm just suggesting tidy and restore is very vague. And I, and I think we can do better.
Okay. Just a note, for the map, that's just shorthand notation.
Okay.
And I did try to explain it more thoroughly in the original memo, which was, we're going to make sure that they are contained properly.
Okay.
Heather?
I stepped out to use the restroom, and also talked to a gentleman outside, so I didn't hear Stan Summer's objection to...
It was, let's see, somebody help me?
I'm sorry, to have to rehash that.
Well, yeah, he basically was wondering why we're getting into this, and I don't, you know, he was basically, why, why is the city government messing with this, and he wants smaller government, which is his standard piece. Dennis?
Yeah, I took notes. He said, he said that the city taxes should be reduced, and that one of the ways would be to reduce the number of people in the community development department, and that who are making up these rules about, about how property should be maintained.
Well, he needs to come live in my neighborhood then, for a while, and...
Well, I know Stan, I just, I don't think, I'm...
Are there, okay, let's see. Let's see, we, this was sent to council, I'm trying to remember if we already have, do we have a motion on the floor? No, we don't have a motion, so, so a motion would be in order. Brandon?
Yeah, I would move approval of this ordinance number 2007-06-047.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there discussion? I think this is a great start, and we may have to come back and fine tune it, but I think staff is, with the work that's gone back and forth, is, this is an additional piece to help maintain aspects of R2 neighborhoods, and something that came from a request that, that Brandon and I made some time ago, so thank you very much.
I do agree with Dennis that we can use a little more specificity.
Yeah, I think the word containment is used a lot in the, in the ordinance itself, so, though tidy is a word I like, especially when it applies to my son's bedroom.
Well taken.
Yes, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Can you hear me?
Motion carries. We have one agenda, which are mayoral appointments, we have to the Urbana Library Board, Dumeš Thakar, Community Development Commission, Brad Roof and George Francis, reappointments for cable commission...
Are you guys still there?
Yes, we're still here.
Yeah.
Okay, we're doing the mayoral appointments, so Dumeš Thakar, Brad Roof, George Francis, reappointments to cable commission, Dural Cruz, development review board, Bryan Adams, Betsy Cronin, free library board, Beth Shide, historic preservation commission, Rich Cahill, Mary Stewart, and Alice Novak, human relations commission, Daniel Larson, plan commission, Ben Grosser, property maintenance code, board of appeals, Donald Heeler and Gary Stevens, and the tree commission is Barbara Anderson and Michael Stevenson. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Have a motion, and, you want to make a second? And a second from Heather and Robert, any discussion? Let's see, this is a voice vote, right? Yes, all those in favor of the appointments?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
These appointments are approved. Anything further? Seeing none, this council meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good job, Charlie.